The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyers, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Young, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coen, twenty present.
Quarant being present, I ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who is able to stand to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. With the suspend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, I move for adoption of cur- second about Alderman from the twelfth, Alderman from the eighth, would you like to pro Thiers?
Morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I have a resolution today for a city employee who has been very, very effective for the eighth ward and many of the other aldermen here, and I would like to take the opportunity to read this resolution. And if Mr. Tim Moffett would come on up. Whereas we've been apprised that Tim Moffett will soon be retiring after many years of service to the city of St. Louis, and whereas Tim Moffett began working as a capital improvement project liaison in the planning and programming division of the Board of Public Service in September of 2007, and whereas Tim has worked directly with many of the city's aldermen to plan and coordinate hundreds of capital improvement projects using revenue generated from the one-half cent capital improvement sales tax, and whereas Tim has developed high-quality technical reports that resulted in capital improvements that provide functional and aesthetically pleasing streetscapes throughout the city of St. Louis, and whereas Tim has also supported the development of division procedures and policies to improve operational and efficiency of the old ward capital improvement program. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate Tim Moffett for his years of service to the city of St. Louis, and we wish him peace and happiness in his retirement, and we direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to further prepare a commemorative copy to the end and may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Signed, President of the Board of Aldermen, Louis Reed. Thank you, Tim. And I just would like to say a couple of things. In the eighth ward, many of you know, many of my residents are, have a lot of different ideas of what should be done and not be done, but when the residents of the eighth ward look at Dorothy Park, or Winita Park, or the gates at Halliday and Grand, there were so many projects, the bump outs of Thurman and Shenandoah, all of these projects that were important to the various neighborhoods in the eighth ward were all done through Tim, Tim working with the neighbors and getting it right, getting it through the city right. But all of these projects have made a significant difference in our streetscape and in our neighborhoods, and for that I am much appreciative because Tim did get us through the red tape and did get the work done. So on behalf of the residents of the eighth ward, Tim, I particularly congratulate you today.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the tenth?
Thank you once again. Alderman from the eighth, will you please stop using my microphone? Timothy, it's been a pleasure. Tim has been my liaison for the tenth ward, helping with many, many projects, the most beautiful being the bathroom at Beara Park, which is, I'm sorry, the comfort station at Beara Park, which will be completed with his lasting legacy in my ward. It only took us four years to get that one done. Thank you, Tim, so much for all your help.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third?
Yes, I would also like to thank Tim. We've done a lot of work together, a lot of improvements, a lot of sidewalks out there on cold days. Tim would have to take pictures and measure stuff, but I do believe that the twenty-third ward is a better area because of the actions you've taken, and I do appreciate all the work we've done together. We actually even had Tim play music in our park. He's an accomplished piano player. So congratulations, Tim, and enjoy your retirement.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tim, thank you so much for your help on the projects in the twenty-eighth ward, in what, in the high-maintenance twenty-eighth ward, and for getting a number of projects accomplished like the street improvements on Waterman, the closing off of Park Drive, and many other projects. So thank you for your help. Appreciate it.
Alderman from the twentieth?
Mr. President, members of the board, I suppose, Tim, this means that you're now available to give advice and consulting in other wards?
Yeah.
Or maybe you're available for gigs with your piano playing. You know, you and I have never had the opportunity to work together. I just saw you stealthily going through the various offices to talk with other aldermen. I always find it sort of amazing, Mr. President, that we take the time, and I think it's a good thing that we do when a person is getting ready to leave us as a city employee, but wouldn't it be great if we could figure out a way, and I know you do the appreciation lunches and so forth, wouldn't it be great if you could have one of those on your wall down in your office for a year or two so that other employees could see this? But I wish you luck. I'm always happy to see the great skilled employees that we have, and it's wonderful that you have a chance to take a bit to rest after the many years of work. Thank you, Tim.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Tim, I also want to just say thanks and congratulations for people who weren't here today to be able to tell you thank you themselves. You know, as you know, that resolution is the highest honor this board has to give any person or organization, and what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this moment to the fabric of our city, and it will play a big role years from now when they go back and research the records of the city of St. Louis, and they want to know about the Renaissance and the rebirth of our city, and they'll find the name Tim Moffett amongst those records and be able to read about us pausing in our deliberations today to recognize you for your many contributions. You have left a, your fingerprint on this city, and I appreciate it. My family and friends and people all across the city appreciate it. Congratulations on a job well done, Tim.
Thank you for the kind words. I'd just say that the word liaison job is not an easy job, but it's very interesting and exciting, and I really enjoyed working with you aldermen. I really did. It was very exciting, a lot of fun, very hard work, but very rewarding. Thank you very much for your kind words.
Alderman from the twenty-third?
Would like to make that in bank if it's not already in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second about Alderman from the sixth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make another copy of the resolution in bank.
So noted.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest. Any introductions? Alderman from the nine?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today Ronnie Hour, and also I'd like to have for my honored guest today Alderman Moore, Sam Moore. I want to wish a happy birthday to him, and I've been going through some of my stuff that's been packed away and trying to sort some of my kid's stuff out so I can move it on to them, and I found this old boxing information format on it from the Gateway Classic back in 1996.
Oh, wow.
And when I was kind of paging through it, I saw this young guy in there, and I just didn't, you know, didn't recognize, you know, him, but it's Alderman Moore from years ago.
Oh, man.
And I'm actually in there too with the Cherokee Boxing Club, but I just thought it was pretty interesting, and I'll show it to him, but I'm going to make him beg me first. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth?
I'd like to have as my special guest today President Reed, Maureen McDonald from STL Realtors, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73, and Harry Kennedy, Senator Kennedy from the fourteenth ward as representing the Recorder of Deeds Office. I'd also like to introduce Todd Hake, Keith Taylor, Mark Dalton, and Jeff Hans from Carpenter's District Council. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the sixth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my honored guest the amazing Jerome Murray from the License Collector's Office.
Alderman from the twenty-third?
Yes, I'd like to have as my honored guest from the Plumbers and Pipefitters, David Holmes, Dick Kellert, and Michael Grand, and from the Fire, Percy Green III.
Alderwoman from the sixteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lencia from AGC.
Alderman from the eighth?
Good morning again, Mr. President, members of the board. This morning I have one of my constituents, Mr. Paul Phaler, who is the safety chairman for the Shaw Neighbor.
Alderman from the twelve?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today from the Carpenter's District Council, Todd Hake and Jeffrey Hans.
Alderman from the ninth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Maureen McDonald from the St. Louis Realtors Association snuck in on me too, being that was the first one, so I want to also have her as my honored guest. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the four, Alderwoman from, Alderwoman from the first. We'll give you a chance to hop over. Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I also wanted to be as my special guest, this esteemed colleague from the fourth ward who is dressed in regal African garb, but so much so that I didn't even know who it was as I walked behind him, and to wish him many, many happy twenty-ninth birthdays.
Alderman from the four.
That's why Sharon has become one of my favorite alderperson. Twenty-nine and fine. Good morning, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest all those of you who, their names weren't called, and also Mr. Ricky Jackson from my ward. Where is Ricky? Ricky, are you here? Ricky Jackson. Thank you.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, that wraps up.
Excuse me, there's a caucus going on around my microphone. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We gather everyone knows today is Halloween, the day where we're, after years of telling our children not to take candy from strangers, we send them out to the street dressed as animals to knock on people's doors and beg for candy. It's a wonderful day in the neighborhood, but more importantly, it's also the day in 1846 when the Donner Party had a great decision, hey, it looks like it's not going to snow too heavy, let's stay here tonight. But this is also National Knock-Knock Joke Day, so if you all indulge me and help me, knock-knock, little old lady.
Old lady who?
Don't yodel, this is a meeting, thank you.
Alderman from the seventeenth, we recognize approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the October the seventeenth minutes.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, second about Alderman from the first. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have from the honor of the mayor the following correspondents. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Community Jobs Board. Miss, the reappointment of Mr. Sal Martinez, a resident of the seventh ward, and whose term will expire on December the tenth, 2016. The reappointment of Leonard Togeness, a resident of St. Louis County, whose term will expire on December the tenth, 2016. The appointment of Reverend Calvin Jessel Strong, a resident of St. Louis County, whose term will expire on December the tenth, 2016. The appointment of Darryl Grimes, a resident of St. Louis County, whose term will expire on December the tenth, 2016. The appointment of Yakita Haynes, a resident of St. Louis County, whose term will expire on December the tenth, 2016. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize the mayor's appointments to the St. Louis Community Jobs Board.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to make a motion to have those community jobs, community jobs appointed from the mayor's office.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-sixth, second about Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
We'll dispense with line items seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal accountants? Would anyone like to take any bills of any of our informal accountants? We dispense with line items eight through, eight through eleven. Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 174 to Ways and Means.
So noted.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Ways and Means Committee. Board Bill 124, committee substitute sponsored by, sponsored by Alderwoman Cruzen, and on its recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service, approving the assignment of the CLP Leashole Golf successor by name change to CNL Income Eagle Leashole Golf, the current, let's see, to CS Forest Park, AR CIS, as the sign E. Board Bill 161, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers, and on its authorizing the execution of intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city and Cary Avenue Community Improvement District, and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Public Safety Committee. Board Bill 138, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and on its repealing order 68997, prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the twenty-seventh ward, liquor control district, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 139, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and on its repealing order 69009, prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the fourteenth ward, liquor control district, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 168, sponsored by Alderman Vollmer, and on its repealing order 69597, prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the tenth ward, liquor control district, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 175, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and on its repealing order 69594, prohibiting the issuance of any package liquor licenses for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the twenty-second ward, liquor control district, and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
We've dispensed with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill 140, sponsored by Alderwoman Young, and on its recommended by the Port Authority Commission, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into a lease agreement between the city and ACL Transportation for certain land and mooring privileges on the unapproved ward for a period of ten years commencing on the date of execution with three five-year mutual options. Board Bill 142, committee substitute, sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Schmidt, Alderwoman Tyers, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderman Villa, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Cruzen, and Alderwoman Behringer, and on its pertaining to the establishing, establishment of a poet laureate position, creating a poet laureate task force and an effective date. That's the extent of our perfection consent.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we perfect, we approve the perfect consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the seventeenth, entertain the second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 143, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing eight supplemental appropriation in the total amount of $519,300 from the Airport Development Fund into the Airport Schedule F CIP project for the payment of costs for work and services authorized therein and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 143.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I would move for perfection of Board Bill Number 143 this morning.
Move by Alderman from the eighth, second about Alderman from the ninth. Alderman from the eighth, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
It's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderwoman, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coen, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Boyd. Twenty-four aye votes, one no vote.
Aye vote, you stay in the motion from Alderman from the eighth and perfected. Board Bill Number 143.
Board Bill 144, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works and improvement program at a total estimated cost of $971,978, authorizing an initial appropriation in a total amount of $971,978 from the Airport Development Fund to be expended for the payment of costs for emergency work and services authorized herein and containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 144.
I would move for perfection of Board Bill Number 144 and request previous roll.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, second about Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Any discussion? Been a request for previous roll, and no objection. Motion carries.
Board Bill 145, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing supplemental appropriation, and set apart in a total amount of $1,078,022 from the Airport Development Fund to the air, to the annual budget for current expenses of the government and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 145.
Mr. President, I would move for perfection of Board Bill Number 145 and request previous
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighth, entertain the second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. There's been a request for previous roll. Here, here ain't no objection. Motion carries.
Board Bill 146, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Comptroller, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, making certain findings with respect to the transfer of up to $2,505,000 of excess monies that the city intends to transfer from Debt Service Stabilization Fund to the Airport Development Fund containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 146.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill Number 146 and request previous roll.
Here, move by Alderman from the eighth, second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? Been a request for previous roll. Here ain't no objection. Motion carries.
Board Bill 147, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, establishing and authorizing a public works and improvement program at a total estimated cost of $30 million, authorizing an initial appropriation in the total amount of $30,287,271 from the Airport Development Fund and containing a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you rec, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill Number 147.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill Number 147 and request previous roll.
Been moved by Alderman from the, from the eighth, second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? Has been a request for previous roll. Here ain't no objection. Motion carries.
Board Bill 148, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into an executed agreement and a contract of sale between St. Louis, the owner and operator of Lambert Airport and North Park Partners LLC, providing for the sale of approximately 6.475 acres of property owned by St. Louis for the sum of $225,000, and providing for the purchase of property, purchase of approximately .35 acres of property owned by North Park and for the sum of $17,700, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to enter into and execute a quick claim deed and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 148.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill Number 148 and request previous roll.
Move by Alderman from the eighth, second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? Here ain't no obj, here ain't no objection to previous roll. Motion carries.
Board Bill 149, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended by the Airport Commission, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into a dual customs agreement between the city owner and operator of Lambert Airport and Brownsville International Air Cargo Incorporated, memorializing the city's and VIAC's mutual understandings and commitments to each other for cooperation to obtain approval for establishing and develop dual customs cargo facility at the, at the airport and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill Number 149.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill Number 149 and request previous roll.
Move by Alderman from the eighth, second about Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? It's been a request for previous roll. Here ain't no objection. Motion carries.
Board Bill 150, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and on its recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute seven air, seven on-airport passengers to and execute seven air, seven on airport passenger vehicle rental concessions agreements at Lambert Airport between the city and the following concessionaires: Hertz Corporation, Avis Rent-A-Car Systems doing business as Avis Rent-A-Car, Enterprise Leasing of St. Louis doing business as National Rent-A-Car Enterprise Leasing Company of St. Louis doing business as Enterprise Rent-A-Car Budget Rent-A-Car System doing business as Budget Rent-A-Car Enterprise Leasing Company of St. Louis doing business as Alamo Rental Rent-A-Car, and CG Rental Incorporated doing business as 350 Car Rental and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill number 150.
Mr. President, I move for perfection of Board Bill number 150 and request previous roll.
Been moved by the alderman from the 8th, seconded by the alderman from the 23rd. Any discussion? It's been a request for previous roll. Here ain't no objection. Motion carries.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading.
Board Bill 131, 137, 141, 164, 165, 166, and 126.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the third reading consent calendar.
We approve the third reading consent.
Moved by the alderman from the 17th, entertain the second on that motion. Second, seconded by the alderwoman from the 13th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyers, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coan, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-four aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion. Alderman from the 17th, in third red and finally passed before mentioned bills. We've dispensed with line item 18, report of enrollment.
Board Bills 131, 137, 141, 164, 165, 166, and 126.
All other business being suspended. The President shall an open session of fix's signature here too to end that these may become law. We'll dispense with line items 21 and 22. Missed lanes, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Friday, full board meeting, November the 7th, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the 17th.
Mr. President, I move that we excuse the alderpeople from the 5th. Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman, when I, when I ask if there are any more announcements, you need to get up and, and get to the mic a little bit sooner because when I move to the Alderman from the 17th, you are out of, you are, you are out of time. But this time, I'm going to allow you to continue, but the next time, please, please get up to the mic so that you can be recognized.
President, I was actually standing here before you recognized the alderman from the 17th.
You were not, you were not standing there, Alderman.
But I, I would like to announce that tonight St. Anthony's Padua on Merrimack Street is having a trunk or treat starting at 6 o'clock. It's a very popular event in the neighborhood. There's hundreds of families that come through. I would invite anyone to join us this evening for that. Also Harvest Church, which is located at Compton and Itasca, is also having a trunk or treat this evening. So it should be a fun, safe evening in the Dutchtown neighborhood. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we excuse the alderpeople from the 5th, 15th, 19th, and 22nd wards.
Moved by the alderman from the 17th, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the 4th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn till next Friday, November the 7th.
It's been moved by the alderman from the 17th, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by the alderman from the 4th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We stand adjourned.